Alright, let me just check if this broadcast is going. We're gonna go for an hour. And in this hour, I hope to cover as much as I can of this book. Uh, strategic. Strategic play. Let me just check if the podcast is on. Checking my phone to see if the broadcast is playing or no. Yes, it seems to be live. Okay, let's do this. Let's make it so I can see the chat too, hopefully. Okay. Alright, let's do this. Let's do this. Okay. Let's start. So. What does it say here? I already read. I skipped this part of it. It talks about him being super impressed by Nimzowicz's book, My System. And they talked about how there's no complete system of knowledge uh for positional play, but he hopes to lay out in this next game. Um, some directions for exploration of this theme of positional play. And that uh yeah, okay, let's go. Let's do this. So first he gives this game where apparently he's going to present us with various themes of positional play that we can go deeper into. So let's, let's do this. Yeah, in this game, there are no complicated variations or spectacular combinations. Uh, the strict logic of a positional battle also has its inherent beauty. Okay, let's let's do this. C four. G six. I'd see three, so an English opening here. Uh, G three. I used to play this as white. And I played this with black as well. Shift G two, E five. D three, knight C six. E three. Okay, this E three move is a, is a bit weird to me. Makes sense, and I might play it in the future myself. I like it. But usually I used to play E four, the bottom, bottom minic system. Okay, knight G seven. Uh, knight G two. Castles, castles. And we have bishop E six. So it seems black is trying to do this sort of thing. Uh, and knight D five. So I've seen this idea before. I actually went through Mihail Marin's book on the English and talks about this kind of idea where now when black tries to go queen D seven, which he does, now black will have to shepherd this pawn. So bishop E six, H three is not possible. Trade, trade, and then C seven is hanging. Although then I'm curious, like, and I guess knight cannot take because pawn takes and forks these two. Bishop doesn't want to take because then he's training bishop for knight. So knight D five is kind of untouchable. Okay, so what does it say? Otherwise, black would have played D five. It subsequently pressed along the D file on the weak D three pawn. Right, because he played E three, D three is weak. And so let's, let's put that to the test. He's saying black was gonna play D five otherwise. So if I played a move like E three, is D five really coming? One, two, three. Three defenders and one, two, three attackers. Yes. Black could have done this. And then, yes, though, D three pawn. Whoops, D three. D three pawn becomes really weak. Right, okay, so that's why white played knight D five there. That's right. These are like kind of this deeper strategic ideas that like I generally don't even think about. So it's good to expose myself to this. Okay, queen D seven. And rook B one. This is white's flexible development scheme is one of the best against the king's Indian defense. Yeah, I like it too. Uh, different. Okay. Um. Pieces are harmoniously deployed behind the pawns, right? Okay, the two sides subsequent plans are largely dictated by pawn formation. Black, thanks to his pawn at E five, has more space on the king's side. And yeah, so he's gonna play F five, G five. Even F four, which is always scary. But it says white can neutralize this with F four himself, something which I actually like love to do with white is play F four in these positions to stop that kind of king side stuff. It says he himself, white, will attack on the queen's side. Of course, B four, B five is coming. That's why we played rook B one. And then by advancing his pawn to B five, it'll kick out the knight on C six. And intensify this pressure exerted by the bishop. Okay. If black wishes to push back the knight from D five by playing C six himself, white will open up the B file by exchanging this pawn. Right, the box already on B one. Uh, and then bring out his bishop to A three. This is new to me. Bring out his bishop to A three and his queen to A four. Interesting, okay. Taking out, there's clearly no point in developing his bishop at D two in the open. Okay. See now, that's a deeper idea here, like anybody would just play bishop D two, even I might consider this. But he doesn't do it because the real strategic deployment of the pieces is to go B five and then go bishop A three next. Like if black plays C six to kick out the knight on D five, then there's pressure along the diagonal. Says it'd be advantageous for the opponent to exchange strong G to bishop. Without a support, if that's yeah, largely devalued. In addition, the position of the white king is weakened, but bishop H three will not do. Right, because the C seven is hanging. Uh, right, because of course in view of yeah, knight takes C seven. Okay, but now imagine the black kings, it's not on E seven, but F six or H six. Then bishop H three is possible since. Holy crap, what is this? What is this? It's saying if this knight wasn't on E seven, if it was on F six or uh or H six, then black could go bishop H three because then if bishop takes H three, queen takes H three, and knight C seven, then knight hops into G four. Let me checkmate on F two, or on H two. Okay. This learns something. Okay. Uh, this means this simple tactical multi suggests to black the idea of slightly changing the arrangement of his forces in the opening, right? So this knight in hindsight might not be the best place, be better placed on these squares from where it can attack, then bishop H three would be possible in that position. Okay, he's saying he himself preferred to develop knight F six, for example. Knight G two, cast kaya, and we get this position here. And in this position, it's saying a rook B one is now harmless in view of bishop H three, right? In the event of knight EC three, you have uh they reply bishop H three, would not be in a way. So it's saying instead of rook B one with this picture, if he played knight, knight EC three, then bishop H three wouldn't work. Why is that? Because uh, then knight takes F six, oh right, if, because then knight F six, then bishop takes. Then knight D five. And I'm hitting the bishop. And now I take the bishop on H three, queen takes, and knight takes C seven. Is that it? Bishop D eight, no, so if I'm hitting the bishop, bishop has to go to D eight. Then bishop D two takes, takes F five, queen B three, better chance for white. I don't know. Hmm, let's actually, let's, let's go through this. Let's put this on the board. If instead of ninety seven, if you went knight F six here, let's just follow this variation, put on the board. Uh, knight G two. Castles. Castles. Bishop E six, knight D five. And queen D seven. Okay, now if rook B one, it's saying bishop H three is now uh possible. And this is the line it was giving, like it takes, queen takes. White thinks he's being smart taking there, but then knight G four seals the deal. Black wins. However, if instead of rook B one, white set up this trap, knight C three, then here, this is different because now we take intermezzo, put the knight on D five, now returning this again. Knight takes C seven, but of course, black would play bishop D eight. Now what does it say? What would white do here? Then bishop D two, queen uh bishop takes, king takes. F five, and it's a queen B three, and white has better chances. No, I'm not sure if I agree with this. Let's see. Why is, why is, why have better chances? I guess F four might come. And can black play F four himself? Takes, takes, knight takes. No. That's probably why. Uh, yeah, anyways, okay. B three. It says first stronger is ten. Knight E eight on move ten. So instead of bishop H three, knight E is stronger, right? So not allowing the trade. Now you have superfluous knights here. Yeah, now bishop H three is gonna be a threat. And uh, and now, and also knight D eight followed by C six is a threat. Uh, knight on D five feels uncomfortable, right? The C three knight is occupying the square it would like to withdraw to. Uh, yeah, the superfluous piece. I've read about this. Okay. Let's keep going here. Uh, says R three, Yusupov several times tried. It's knight to H six. This plan has its logic. Okay. So now it gives a game where Yusupov developed his knight to H six. Kind of to circumvent some of the ideas we talked about here. So let's quickly go through this. Uh, we have C four. Uh, E five, knight C three. C six, G three, G six. G two, bishop G seven. E three. D six, knight G two, knight C, right, so developing knight here instead this time. Rook B one. And now says this is a dubious move. Okay, A five. A three, bishop E six. Knight D five, it says D three was sounder, okay. Castles. Castles, queen D seven. B four and bishop H three, and we see the idea here. You would think white can take and then uh take on C seven, but then knight G four to follow. And in this line, uh, there's no knight takes F six kind of thing we looked at earlier. So here. D three, bishop G two takes, and then F five, F four. Question mark. So this is important because I would have lashed out with F four myself as well. So and I'm curious, why is it giving this question mark? It says E four was better. Okay, this gets a bottom minic system kind of position. And of course, there's enough control over F four here. So that's not really a threat. Interesting. So F four. This is question mark, why? Okay, A takes B four. A takes G F four, oh what? No. What the heck is with that? Did I miss a move or something? What's going on here? This is all strange. A B four, A, E takes F four. Okay, I see. And then G takes F four, right? Uh, knight E seven. I'm still waiting for the point of like why F four had a question mark that stood. Knight T C three. King H H, queen B three. Knight G four. Rook F two. Queen E six. What, what is this? Why is he giving up C seven? What is going on here? No, I must be missing some kind of move. Oh, because he went knight D C three here, back here. Knight D C three. I don't know why, but okay. King H eight. B three. Knight G four. Bishop D two. Queen E six, rook F three. C six. H three, knight F six. Rook F two. At H five, what's going on here? Knight G one. H six. And knight F three, G five. Uh, F G five, H G, knight G five. Queen H six. Obviously, what was, what's my kind of conclusion here? Like, I won't go through all of it. Maybe I will, I don't know. Maybe I'll go back through it and then like try to find like a conclusion to draw from this. I guess queen H six, knight F three. It says uh, if H four, then knight G six, right? H four becomes really weak, so it's back. Rook G eight, so black is sacked upon, but look at the white king. King F one. Uh, knight G six, knight E one, king E one. F four. Uh, okay, I think I'll, I'll, I'll stop going through this here. Um. And just try to draw a conclusion from this. It said F four was, was a mistake. And I think it's because um after E takes he takes uh this pawn didn't want to take, I think, because then D four is weak, maybe? Well, I'm not even sure about that, honestly. But uh, with a knight on H six, like uh, E three becomes weak kind of maybe. So anyways, after cheat, cheap on took, then black played king H eight, and then it said about chief, H six and G five, was it? Yeah. Uh. Oops. Yeah, we got this kind of thing happening. G five, and then uh, white's king was destroyed here. So I think that's could be why. So that's something to watch out for when I play F four. Although I'm not sure why in certain lines, lines it works and other lines it doesn't work, but okay, let's keep going here. So back here. Uh, what does it say? Instead of rook B one preferable is castle, castle. Okay, where? What is that even referring to? Move seven. Rook B one. Here, it says better is castles. Castles and D three and E. Bishop E six. No idea why. Yeah, we get this kind of position. Why is it saying that? It says in the game, hort versus Kovačević, what Kovačević? She's like so knight D five. D seven, rook B one. Bishop H three. B four, bishop takes G two, king takes. Knight D eight. This C six idea, right? B five, C six, and it's that black's chances are already better. Hmm. Okay, so it probably makes sense to prevent the exchange of bishops. Oops. And what's this position? Okay, so after knight D five. Queen E seven, rook B one, bishop H three. B four. Takes. King takes. Knight D eight. B five, C six. I already went, what the, I already went there. It probably makes sense to prevent the exchange of bishops with H three, it says. So I'm guessing back here. Move nine? Yeah, move nine, H three. It says exclamation mark. Instead of knight D five, the H three. Uh, that to prevent the exchange of bishops, now this king H two. So queen D seven, king H two. F five and then B three. Rook K E eight and then D four. Here are two practical examples. Okay, so now if F four, then we have D five. F three. T E six. Rookies. Wait, rookies six, shit. I think the knight's on H six or something. Shit. It's the knight H six uh line. Here. In this line, okay, knight H six, then I guess uh something like this. Saying H three here is better. I think, queen seven, king H two. Uh, F, was it? F five? And then uh, B three. Okay, rook K E eight. This is the game, yeah. D four. F four. It says dubious, why? Okay, D five. Because he miscalculated something? So F three. Takes, rook has to take, she takes, rook takes. So what happened there? I lost a pawn and black lost a pawn. So we should be equal in theory. So why is it saying black? It uh made him, it was that dubious move, why? Then we have eighty four. Turning knight G five. Or knight C five, right, because of this pin. Uh, then we have rook back to E eight. King G two, rook F F eight. Bishop A three, F five. I don't know, white just seems super solid here. It's E seven for K D one. White has the obvious advantage. I agree. C five is probably incoming. It's just super, super solid. So that means that H three was the way to play. It says, avoiding the trade. Although somehow, yeah, H three. It's just more solid, it seems. And F four, there's enough control. I actually like it when white doesn't play E four against the king's Indian and keeps this kind of structure. Because you have a lot more control over the F four square. And yeah, I just really like that better. Okay, so now another game after uh, D four. Okay, we looked at F four, which was a dubious move that happened one game, and then another game, let's try bishop F seven. Okay, so then we had D five, D five. Knight takes E five. Bishop B two, G five. Seems like black is really stretching. Or, or they're gives it a X clamp, interesting. Black intends G four or bishop H five. Amazing. Uh, then F four. Right, natural reaction. When the knight E G four, holy shit. Because the knight's coming thereafter. H G four, knight G four, king G one, but he doesn't even take it. He goes first. Queen E six. I guess he can take it later, but still. I think the real idea is he's going this way. The whites would have to, let's see if I can figure out what, what might white might play here. Uh. How would I defend this if I was white? I have no idea, man. Maybe I would go take an F four, let's see here. Now he goes queen D two. I guess this is not the end of the world because I just move, move the rook aside somewhere, maybe? Well, okay, so he goes queen takes. And we had uh, queen takes. And rook takes E three. I don't know why, but okay, followed by rook F E eight with a complicated and apparently roughly equal position. Alright. So black did better in this game. I like this G five idea. Okay. Uh, and this, that sack was interesting. G, uh, E G four after that, because you would think F four would just shut up, I think, okay, it's going back here. And this last game, black hopes successfully, this okay, why is, they can be approved. Instead of bishop B two. So here. Instead of bishop B two here, I think. Uh, instead of fourteen, bishop B two, yes. He should have for the, kept the bishop on the C one H six diagonal by playing rook B, B one. Uh, why is that? I don't know. Oh, because it, it guards E three. In that last line, after G five and this knight sack after F four, E three became super weak. Although. Okay, so B one. Another tempting idea is on move eight, B three. So instead of D three, you play B three here. And again, this is keeping this fortified. Yeah, and he saves tempo by pushing the pawn to D four in one go rather than playing D three first. Uh. Okay, lesser. Okay, so what this, what this whole analysis taught me is like the deeper level to opening preparation, or even like just thinking about the middle game even. Uh, like when you put, when I look at moves in the engine, it, it gives the similar evaluations to these moves like D three, B three, whatever. H three. And I don't really know the, the reasons why, but only until you see like some ensuing games, the uh, continuations from the positions, then you realize, okay, the ideas behind the moves. So like we saw one game where there was this bishop H three idea, and after you trade, queen ends up here. And the knight comes to G four. So then it makes you understand, okay? Uh. And this knight C seven idea, and then putting the knight on H six instead of F six, so that there's no knight takes F six, and that now it makes sense to why you're putting the knight on H six. It makes sense why you would play H three and king H two to avoid the trade of bishops. Uh, now I have the F four idea. And I saw that even after the F four idea and uh, G five, white can still come under pressure if E three is weak after D three. So then maybe you would want to improve like this, like there's a deeper level to, to the game. So let's return to the setup of the knight on E seven, the original game. And no, he didn't go H six here, he went even E seven. Where's that game with the knight on E seven? There we go. Promote this variation, okay, good. Ninety seven. Move, okay. And we got two, which position here? Knight D eight. Again, instead of bishop H three. Knight D eight is the move. So why not bishop H three? Because here, there's a knight uh, C seven threat. So knight D eight is played to play C six, but then I read earlier in the book, remember that white wants to go B four and B five, so that on C six, he has to trade and open B file. So I'm guessing B four is the move. Uh, what did he play here? On move eleven, he played, right, he played B four. But let's go back here. It says sometimes black tries A five, it's knight D eight. Um, but to him, it says it runs contrary to the well-known positional principle where you don't move pawns on the side of the board where you're weaker. Because this leads to the opening of the A file. Now, interestingly, that's the move I would lash out with as black, but now after reading this, I might reconsider this in the future. You don't push pawns where you're weaker. Uh, because opening of the A file, it says will most probably favor white, because it's he who is dominant on the queen's side. So that changes my ideas about this. I would have previously been happy to open the A file with my rook there. Um, but okay, now I changed my mind. Okay. Now, A five, okay. And then uh, white would go A three. Uh, and then rook K E eight was played. Dubious, it says. There followed B takes, B four, A takes, A takes. Uh, knight D eight. B five, C six. So now you see the B file opening up. B takes, B takes, ninety seven. Eighty seven. Sorry, no, uh, rookie seven. And, and now it asks, how would you now have continued? This is the exercise. And so I'm guessing the answers are in the back, so let's check it later, maybe. Okay, so let, let me think about this exercise here. How would we continue as whites? This is it's important to do these puzzles, okay? So I'm guessing rook B six is a candidate move. Uh. How would I continue here as white? So white's gonna, black's gonna play F five probably. F four takes, takes. Oh, that should be okay. So one idea is to play queen A four. And then rook B six and uh if black tries D five. Um. So D four is interesting as well, but then bishop takes C four. So I would try queen A four. Although then I'm worried about D five. No, not really. If D five, okay, so I'm, I'm thinking this variation right here. If queen A four. Uh, I was worried about D five, but I don't think it works because takes, takes here. Uh, you can really make this pawn weak, I think, uh, with, let's say. No, this is not working. So I'm not sure what white should play here. D five. Oh, but you have, you have bishop A three. I just saw that. Okay, so he cannot play uh, D five. And if you cannot play D five, then this is coming under some serious pressure. Like, let's say F five. Rook B six. Although then, then I'd be curious if I even want to take the pawn, but there's definitely is a lot of pressure. I don't know if I want to touch that pawn even, like if F four, it's not working yet because I have this. There's not F four yet. Yeah. Okay, so I wonder where the answers to the exercises are. Uh, hopefully I'll come, come across it later. Okay, so let's go back to the game here. Move eleven, B four. Hopefully, this is even position. No, this not, he played knight D eight. Uh, how did this go? He went knight D eight here. Maybe had B four, sees. Uh. Okay, and then he goes knight takes D five. And I'm curious why he didn't just place C C six here, and I'm guessing it's because of knight takes, queen takes and B five. Yeah. Uh. Okay, good. So back here, he took here. And we had uh C takes. Okay, actually, the book says C six, the knight. That gives the variation here. If C six takes, takes B five, queen D seven, he takes C six. B C six and bishop A three. And it says white had, followed by queen A four, and then queen A six, and it says white has an easy game. Now it says his opponent, instead of doing this, instead of playing C six, he traded here. And his, he did this, his idea is to play bishop H three. But the concession he makes, uh, the book says is the C file is now open for white. So yeah, so C takes. So black does succeed in doing this. Okay, then E four. So now that the bishop's going to get traded off, this makes a lot of sense. He put the pawns on white squares. Now white's plan switches to playing on the C file. So typical play, only the dark squared bishops are left on the board, which means, yeah, white ranges his pawns in light squares. Okay, in order to open the diagonals for his uh, for his bishop, his dark squared bishop now. To fix his pawns on the squares of the same colors. So by playing E four, he's fixed black's pawns on the same color as this bishop, making it making it shuttered in, and then this bishop is now open. Okay, so E four. Takes, he takes F five. F three, right, just putting all the pawns on white squares, just shutting this down, probably even play G four to see. Says white's position is preferable, preferable. Controls more space, you can attack on the queen's side. And this attack is not too dangerous, it says. Uh, black's bishop can be classified as bad. The event of C six, white replies knight C three. And then prepares the exchange of pawn on C six in order to play uh in order to play B five and gain the D five square for his knight. Huh. If black desires, he can play his knight to D four. But these squares are not equivalent. White is attacking the D four square with this bishop, right? So white can even trade it off. Whereas bishop is not able to exchange his bishop for white's knight once it lands on D five. Right, okay. So we get knight F seven. And here's another question, another quiz here, like what should white play here? Uh, let's think about this. What should white play here? See, in a real game, I'd be tempted to play F four. But then uh, having read all the stuff about shutting in black's bishop, now I'm not even sure. So I'm thinking, and if he played B five, black would play B six, and then uh here's banking everything on the C files. I'm not sure about that. So I think after knight F seven, black is going to play Bishop H six and trade off the dark squared bishop, and I need to stop that somehow, but I don't think it's possible. See, I don't know. I think just Queen C two or something, or, I don't know. Yeah, probably Queen C two. Okay, let's keep going. So it says, the following move of mine was probably the best in the game. In order to find it, a chain of reasoning was required. Amazing, okay, so I'm curious what he played now. Says, what does black want? He will most probably play Bishop H six, yeah, I got that. Should I agree to the exchange of bishops, generally speaking? Okay, but avoiding the exchange involves loss of time, the white's rooks will be deprived of the importance of C one squared. Knight will go to G five. Dangerously threatening his king. So that it won't be necessary to exchange the bishop, bishops, but on which square? Okay, so I'm really thinking F four is the move. I issued it on the dogmatic terms, but I think F four, but let's see. On which square the opponent can, uh, take on C one, yeah. Okay, so he would rather take the bishop on H six, so that the knight ends up there instead of there, he's saying. It is clear that any bishop is, was a pure waste of time, right, because it's gonna get traded off anyway, so don't move the bishop. Uh, it says useful to play B five, but then after A six. The opening of the A file causes white a certain amount of discomfort. It's better for him to complete his development, tying the opponent to the. Uh, well, he played rook B three, rook B three was the move here, I wonder why. Tying the opponent to the defensive backward C sound point, why needs to prepare the tripling of his heavy pieces on the C file. Yeah, and when you do that, usually the rooks, the queen is behind the rook, right? So it says, the piece to occupy C one will probably be the king's rook, right? The place for the other rook is C three, and the queen will be deployed behind it on C two. Your general rule operates, on an open file, a rook should stand in front and behind it the queen, right? So this means that it remains to make a choice between Queen B three and Queen C two. Okay, so Queen C two is my first obvious candidate. Uh, he chose rook B three. Okay. I think, but both work, they both achieve the same thing, although I did not have this idea of putting rook on C three. So he says, he thinks it's his best move in the game, rook B three. So he's just gonna pile up everything on the C file, triple damage, he's saying. It says the rook move is the most accurate, so even more than Queen C two, why is that? That's follow, okay. He's saying it's more accurate than Queen C two, because the queen might wanna go to C one. This bishop's gonna get traded off on H six anyways. Okay. Okay, so now black will defend his pawn by rook C eight, but white will advance his queen side. Pawns on uh, A, A two, A four, and then B four, B five. But this will not bring him any immediate gains. Let us remember how we usually mount the pawn attack on the king's side, blacks. Yeah, if the pawn stands on G six and then H four, H five, so I think he's talking about hooks here. But uh, pawn on H six, usually you go G four, G five, so it's a hook, right? Yeah, when we're making a pawn storm, we can use an advanced hook, so black has not created any hooks yet. So we need to kind of draw him out to make a hook. If it, if there is no hook, such hook, it should be created, then the pawn storm will sharply strengthen. So now the following maneuver of the white queen becomes understandable. This is after uh. I think I missed some moves, I supposed to play out some moves here, so after rook P three, what did he play? Uh, okay, so he's saying, move sixteen. He had H six, this is an example game, rook C three. Knight G five, question mark, it says C six, was better, right? Just because he's gonna have to deal with this start anyways, okay, so knight G five, bishop takes, pawn takes. Uh, Queen C one, hitting this and hitting this, right, black is already losing something here. Loss of a pawn is now inevitable. F E four. The, so now that kind of tells you in hindsight, like the value of using the rook first instead of putting the queen on C two. Because the queen ended up going here after all. His F E four, D four, G four. Rook C seven. G F three, rook F three, Queen B five. C four, Queen, this part is not so important, knight G one. And white subsequently converted his advantage. Okay, so going back here, that was one game, Foraski versus Kamenetsky. Now, in this game, he didn't fall for the even play knight G five, blundering into Bishop, Queen C one. He played Bishop H six instead, more sensible, then we take. And he's saying he'd rather, rather have the knight capturing here than over here. That's why he uh, didn't move the bishop, he was ready to trade on H six. Knight takes, and now rook C three. Uh, threatening Queen C one, right, hitting both the knight and here. These are power, power balance squares, they're weaknesses, okay. It says, if knight C F seven would be a mistake due to, due to Queen C two, rook A C, and right, rook A C one, and black has nothing to guard that again with. Which is bad for black here. Black is toast already. Amazing how powerful this whole thing is. So rook C three, he goes rook F seven, so that he can put three defenders on this. Right, if he hadn't played knight F seven, then it would block the path of the rook to come here to guard this. Okay. Now, Queen C two and rook C one can be played, black will defend his pawn by rook C eight, white will advance his. Queen side pawns with A four and B five will not bring it, right, this, now he talks about making the hook. How, how does he make the hook? Then he goes Queen C one. So this is, uh, he has to pick King G seven, yeah, and Queen A three. A six, and so he created the hook now. So white really baited him in, in a very subtle way. Because he knows black wants to move the rook out somewhere. It's useless there, so he's really provoking him into playing H, A six, that frees up the rook. But then white has created the hook and then B five will come force, okay? So Queen A three, A six, yeah, the rook is, okay, rook F C one was threatened. So it's actually even more than that, after Queen A three. He's threatening rook, rook C one, and that's so A six was played because the rook wants to go to C eight, but now he's created the hook. Queen B three, right, now he's free to use the hook. Uh, he just wants to break, break apart the queen side. It says, after A takes, he will take with the queen, transposing into a favorable endgame. That makes sense. And he says he could have gone to A five with the queen. To do the same thing. Uh, but he did not wanna go too far away from the king side, because he knows an attack is coming there, so he puts on B threes where it's still kind of accessible. Can access the king side. Okay, now we get G five, right, so black is getting desperate, full on king side attack, but it says, this is the decisive strategic mistake. Black's pieces are badly placed, and therefore nothing comes of his planned attack, but what should he have played? Uh, there was the principle of the worst piece in a lecture. Uh, so move your worst piece to a better square, I'm guessing that worst placed piece is the knight. Uh, so blacks, yes, so blacks should have played knight G eight instead of G five, it's saying. And then knight F six, and if necessary, defend, right, he can go knight E eight to defend C seven, that makes sense. Uh, then there's another idea, which is a slightly riskier idea, it says, which is to have played Queen B five. Followed by Queen B six, wow. Right, it turns to invade at E three. But however, on the other hand, they come under attack by the white pawns, right? What's going on here? Thank you. Hey, thanks. Hey buddy, hey Goxel, nice to see you. Alright, so how should white continue, it says? So in this position, he played uh, G five, which it says is a decisive strategic mistake, so let's think about why this is and how do we punish it. So obviously, it's not taking, because knight gets in here, it's like, that's not it. So now, if you play rook C one, there's rook C eight, has to be played forced. I'm also wondering if D four now is really powerful. If this takes, this knight is brutal on uh, D four. So D four. Uh, the problem is me taking, if he doesn't do anything, doesn't bring me that, although it kind of does. So I'm, I'm really tempted to play D four and I wonder, but then takes. Takes, and uh, this is not so good for me here. Queen comes into H three, that's not good, so I cannot play D four yet. So probably rook C one. Uh, rook C eight, now I'm on a D four, takes, takes, Queen G four, also is not good. But still, so I think rook C one, rook C eight, and then maybe play A four, B five. So uh, then F four. Is F four any good now that the king is wide open? Maybe, let's see, takes, by uh. Okay, F four. No, that cannot be so good, uh, I really want to play D four to get my rook across. Okay, so hold on, oops, uh, so you played. F four. How does this go? So let's say. If takes there. This is not working. So no, uh, not playing F four, not playing D four, so I'm just going with the rook C one and uh, A four, B five idea. And here are there any threats, G four, I can just play F four, so I'm okay there, so okay, let's go on here. What is, let's look at his analysis. An effective procedure against a black attack is usually center blocks, yeah, but here D four doesn't work, it says, because uh. After F E four. Black opens the F, yeah, gets G four scores for his queen, that's why I abandoned this. Uh, but then it says, it's uh. Always useful to begin with, what does my opponent want? Obviously, is it any G four or F four? Uh, now, after G four, we have the very strong reply F four. Uh, I believe this was my response as well, because it just activates all of white's pieces, right? And again, black's own pieces are blocked, like on G four, it's occupied by a pawn now. So G four is not a threat, because F four will meet it. And after F four, okay, actually, here I didn't think, because if you play G four, there's a sack here. Uh, and that, I think, black will get enough counterplay for a draw at least. So I should have been prophylactic against uh, F four, I, I missed that. So I wonder if um. I can't play H three, because then G four, there's no F four, he takes. Is it H four is not a move? How do I deal with F four? I think I'd have to move the knight somewhere. Just because, okay, so let's say I move the knight somewhere. Then I'm thinking, now F four, I can play this, and this sack doesn't do as much. Although, no, that's, that's brutal. That doesn't work at all, so how do I deal with this? Let's see his analysis. Right, after F four, we would love to reply, G forces, but then obviously there's a knight sack on G four, okay? To avoid this, it is sufficient to choose the prophylactic H three. But in principle, this move is undesirable, since it, yeah, you don't move the pawns on the part of the board where you are weaker. If possible, it is better to get by without it. Perhaps, but the principle of economy of force and defense, make the minimal concessions. When the move H three is undoubtedly a concession, right, does white have to make it? The F five, F four advance also has a serious drawback, it removes the attack on the E four pawn. Huh, then I can go D four, I guess, let's see. Uh, right, and then white would play D four, allowing the third rack to open. Right, so that means it transpires, black is not threatening anything serious. Which means that there is time to make a planned move on the queen side, so A four was the move, right? And he, and after F four, he said he's playing D four, because now there's no attack on the E four pawn, so black cannot open this up. And so now D four is perfectly timed. G four, wow, this, okay, this I did not anticipate, that's, that's brutal. So white better have had a response for this. Guessing we just, yeah, now, okay, so I mean, what, what did white have, that, have in plan for this? G four. Okay, first of all, it says if F G three, H G three and G four, then of course F four we go, that makes sense. So now after G four, he goes D takes E five. And he plus D five, and then he goes, G takes F four. This king is getting wide open, what is going on here? The exchange of pawns allows the white knights to move to E six. Here will be colossally strong, that makes sense, but obviously he goes, he takes F four, and knight D four, okay, this way. But my question is back here, why did he have to take back here? Why couldn't he just go here? But I'm getting, I guess he just goes there and he's, and white's doing really well, this doesn't do anything. So this is the kind of move that would have scared me in a real game, and would have made me do something stupid to try and stop it like H three or something. But uh, grandmasters, they've calculated this out accurately, that they know G four, they've got a good defense against it. It's not, doesn't scare them. So ninety four, King H eight. Slightly better was G takes F three, it says. When white has a pleasant choice between rook takes F three or King H one, okay, so he goes King H eight, ninety six, now white's dominating C six. Um, still, this is scary stuff, how do I deal with this? I'm guessing like rook to three or something, what does he play? He goes. Okay, the game is almost over, after this, I'll stop for today. We've already gone for an hour almost. So he goes Queen B two, okay, I'm setting this up. Good technique, it says, black's king is forced to go to G eight. Uh, which should surprise him with any hopes of using the G file for a counterattack, he was gonna play this. Right, and now the white will be the one to occupy the G file if anything. So King G eight, B five. The triumph of his opening plan of an offensive on the queen side, opponent's defense collapse, defense collapse, he takes. He takes, G takes F three, King takes F three, now why does the one who's going to use the G file? Knight F five. What the heck kind of move is this? Says this is desperation. Now why? Okay, because he wants to play Queen takes D five, so that's actually pretty strong stuff, man. How do I deal with this? I'm guessing I'm forced to take it, Queen takes, take there, no, then he takes there, that's brutal. And I'd say, what the heck do I do here? It's actually covering this. I'm trying, I'm saying we just throw in the check first. Yeah, he does, he throws in the check. This covers a lot more squares, you know, then he goes knight G seven. Now, that's, that's a cop out, but I guess he can't go to H eight. So yeah, rook G one just solves everything. Uh, it kind of forces the, something, the knight just intercepts. Otherwise, knight F five is a, is a pretty strong move, but now he's forced to go back. Then B takes, B takes, rook C two. Threatening rook C G two, right, that is C takes D five. Okay, that is on move thirty five, says. After C takes D five. Wait, that's move thirty four, what's going on here? Am I move, oh shit, I'm gonna move behind there. Oh man, let's go, let's go back and find, okay, here we go. So I missed a move in here somewhere. Knight G seven, I'll move thirty three, whereas mine's on move thirty two, shit, what move did I miss? Whatever, whatever, we'll, we'll skip ahead here. I don't know what's going on, C takes D five. Rook C eight. I don't know, let's keep, who knows? Rook C two. So I'm, I'm actually missing a move somewhere, but it's okay, I'll try and catch up later, I'll try and find the move later. So he goes rookie eight. With the last faint hope of rook C G two, then uh, rook takes E six. And I guess the queen is still trying to enter in here. Yeah, but he decided to go into rook ending with two extra pawns, although of course a simple rook takes C six was equally. Uh, so after rookie eight, he could have just taken. So black is sitting a trap after rook C G two. Here and here, but white could have just taken uh, uh, here, it says. That would have been simple enough, but he, he does something else here, he goes. And uh, he goes rook takes G seven. Oh, so he, he just wants to trade off everything, like absolutely everything. And then just get into a rook endgame up two pawns, this will, this will drop, just liquidates completely, so rook takes. Queen takes, queen takes, knight takes, king takes. Queen takes, queen takes, knight takes, king takes, and then uh. Although he didn't do King takes, he went. See, I'm, I'm actually lost here, but okay, anyways, I'll, I'm probably missing a move somewhere, but uh. This, yeah, I can see why white would be winning here. He did something else. Black or something, anyways. I didn't quite catch the end of that game, cause I missed a move somewhere, but it's fine. I, I got what I needed out of this game. So what this game taught me, oh, it's always good to recapitulate after a lesson, so you actually retain stuff. Uh, is, is the deeper level of analysis in the opening and game, um, so for example. And I've got some nice ideas, like. This kind of position. It's kind of a tabia, like uh, has been played many, many times, I've played this with bold colors. Uh, probably will in the future as well, but there are some, gave me the nuances behind moves like whether you develop the knight here, here, or here. Stuff like that, this ninety eight idea with C six to kick out the N on D five, a lot of these nuances, it let me understand. So now when I do my o- own opening prep in the future in other labs. I'll be able to kind of uh. Uh, fi- get uh. Kind of nail down some ideas behind the moves. By looking at how the games have proceeded. Like he did, right, in this chapter, what did he do, he gave about four or five different games. Which I actually went through, like this is an example. And by going through that game, you see how white can improve, or, or one of the colors can improve, like maybe. We saw that in this position here, after Queen D seven. Black is suffering because he cannot play Bishop H three. That like, let's say I play uh, Rook B one, then takes, takes, Queen takes. And Knight takes C seven, right? So black cannot play that. So then black went back, went back to the drawing board and started developing the Knight uh, F six instead. So we looked at this. And the venom in this idea is now after Rook B one. Black can't play Bishop H three, because takes. He takes enough Knight C seven, Knight G four is winning. Okay, so then, then white goes back to the drawing board, if this is happening. Then he thinks, okay, let's not play Rook B one. And let's play um, what was suggested, uh. H three, right, back here, instead of ninety five, white plays H three. I, I think, or one, in one of these positions, uh, H three, so that we play King H two, avoiding the trade of bishops. And then black goes to the drawing board and Yusupov was developing Knight H six. In some of these positions. And then uh, they also thought, okay, instead of playing D three and then D four is coming later anyways, let's just play E three. And, and then uh, D four comes in one go, like there's a lot of these. Uh, moves, which the engine would just say zero, it's like they all have the same evaluation or slightly differ. You can only make sense of them by going through the games in the database. Then you see why some moves are chosen over others as the strategy plays out. So enough of that, we got an hour in today. Uh, how many pages did I make it through? Just to motivate myself here, so this book is hundred sixteen times two, so three hundred and. Thirty two pages long, and we went through. Actually, there's a nice recap here, let's go through this, and then I'll be on move um. On, on page. Page eighteen or nineteen, so it's just pretty good for one day, going through nineteen pages of a book. And so let's go to the recap very quickly here. It says, after complete our, completing our analysis of the game. Uh, let us. Return to the question of the various directions and positional improvements. So we have positional operations, okay? Yeah. Simple positional operations pursuing immediate clear cut strategic aims, three main types of such operations can be distinguished. Improving the placing of the pieces, maneuvers, regroupings, for example. White prepared the doubling or tripling of his heavy pieces on C file. He had decided where to keep his Queen A five or B three, he kept it on B three to be closer to the king side attack. Transfer this Knight to E six and. Maneuver of the Rook to G two. Black made a strategic mistake, refrained from the maneuver, Knight H G eight. F six, H six to G eight to F six. Right, so these, these are schematic, this is schematic thinking, I've gone through another manual where they call it schematic thinking, where. You have kind of these uh, few move piece operations, these maneuvers. And these plans are kind of yours, whatever, okay? Number two, play with the pawns, the creation of favorable pawn formations, like the hook, the great, I guess. Uh. White's fence on the queen side, opponent's pawnstorm on the opposite side of the board, and the ways of pairing it, yeah, like the move A F four. Or. Meeting F four with D four, yeah, okay, and number three, exchanges. Uh. Right, so like exchanging dark sword bishops, he knew it was coming, so he just avoided moving it out, and then he trades on H six, so that the knight ends up on. H six instead of G five. Uh, the opening position. Yeah, putting Knight F six and thirty seven, black carries out the exchange of light sword bishops and never stayed by the exchange of knights. Which white paired with the idea of H three and King G two, okay? Our operations may be aimed. Yeah, so like provoking the hook, that was interesting. The move Queen B two was nice, yeah, made the king go to G eight, so that black couldn't, couldn't double up, couldn't put his rook on the chief file. Uh, positional operations, threads out of which the fabric became as woven. This skill can and should be constantly trained. Exactly like cognitive vision by solving comparatively simple exercises. Which do not demand a great delving into the position or detailed calculation varies, it's interesting. Which now makes me think I should go through Algar's book, positional play, whatever. Okay, evaluation of a position. Plan, the above came. Black's plan proved to be a failure, the attack on the king side. So a plan is the general course of our play or a quite a, or a quite lengthy period of the game. These plans are only of a guiding nature. Right, so he's talking about how white's plan could have changed if black had deviated somewhere. So they're only of a guiding nature, like if black had played C six, then white's plan would have shifted to just playing B five, the hook is already there. Plays B five and trades it and opens up the B file. And if after B five, black had played C five. Then, right, white would be trying to get the knight to D five, which would be a different plan, and then. And then white would probably even play on the king side with the F four or D four. In their center, yeah. So plans are also what we call shorter ideas. Sometimes it's just one or two positional operations. Uh, so like white trying to triple up on the C file. Right, and uh, black should have. Tried to improve the position of his badly placed knight on H six. Via G eight to F six. Prophylaxis, okay, so he's laying out different positional directions, like different uh, subcategories. How you would improve your positional play, so we, we went through um. One was positional operations, so improving the placing of pieces. Playing with the pawns, creating a favorable pawn formation, number three is exchanges, those are positional operations. Then the next category is prophylaxis. Okay, we, most of us know what prophylactic thinking is by now, and then uh, then we have typical positions. Okay, says it's very useful to select positions similar agents of pawns and pieces and. In order to study the rules that operate in them. So the game we have analyzed is quite a good textbook example of a Sicilian setup. A similar structure, right, so he's saying, uh, uh, examine these similar structures together, to get the ideas in them. So this, what white played here, you get a similar structure in. If you're black against the king's Indian attack, or the closed variation Sicilian Defense. That's something I would wanna do eventually too, like uh, there are certain structures which I'm not good at playing. It says, um, there were many points at which either side could have uh, deviated, like, like black. Could very early on have just played F five. Or H five, like interjected those moves at any point. And at, at that point, if, if we had tried to analyze all those possibilities, we would just be doing an opening exploration, so he's saying, the study of many typical positions. Like, for example, this kind of uh, reverse Sicilian thing that we just looked at, is closely linked with the study of the opening. Thus, there are typical positions, or like, I guess, tabias. Uh. It's useful to study them. Okay, typical situations, right? Principle of the kind of economy of force and defending. Right, that was that move H three, like white, white really wanted to avoid H three, because you don't, you don't push pawns where you're weak. And you wanna use an economy of defense, like you don't make moves unless you have to. Technique, the problem. White did not have any problem in exploiting his advantage, like, if I had been playing white, I would have succumbed to black's king side attack. But white handled it really nicely, like that move Queen B two. Making the king go to G eight, so there's no Rook G, Rook G eight. The connections with tactics and dynamics. Right, there are underlying tactical motives, mo- motives, uh, motives. Even behind positional decisions, for example, the choice between Rook B three and Queen C two, right, he had that Queen C, C one double attack. Uh, initiative. That's another, another positional uh, direction, the initiative, that's another kind of sub top, subcategory. Now, this is actually a new, interesting point to me, uh, the initiative. Sometimes I look, look at open games and I think this initiative is, is going nowhere, like if you look at it with the engine. The initiative is lost after very, is, after a very accurate play from the other side. But here it says. Uh, the initiative is an advantage, not just a purely chess advantage, but it can also be a psychological one. And so like, when you, you're really pressing your opponent, they can make more mistakes, they're not gonna play perfectly accurate. Critical moments. Uh. So it says, in the course of a game, experienced players fairly quickly and easily find the majority of their positional moves, right? But sometimes the solution is not very obvious, and those are your critical moments. Uh. Okay. Yeah, you cannot think for a long time over every move, so you need to be able to sense the critical moments, I think that's something I wanna work at. Uh, some, some moves just come automatically to me, like, just play them, and then. Maybe at like five points in the game, you have these critical moments when you identify them, and then you take more time. So it says, and perhaps the most difficult decision for white was the move Rook B three. Because he had to consider black's plan, which is of course Bishop H six. Uh, trading on C one and playing Knight G five. So in this book, he's gonna cover a lot of these kind of critical moments. Yeah, and then a difficult decision is a transformational position, I actually have trouble with that. Sometimes one advantage has to give way to another. Um. So like when he liquidated on G seven, he liquidated a whole bunch of stuff to go into winning it, yeah, that's a transformation of an advantage, okay, that's enough for today. Did an hour, maybe even a little bit more. That was good. Uh, we went through nineteen, eighteen pages, move, uh, page nineteen, now about three hundred and. Thirty two page book, so not bad. Thanks, guys.